Yep.
Okay, welcome. We opened the meeting at six o'clock and went to executive session to discuss lease and real property. And now we're going to our regular agenda. And the first item is a request from American Legion to address board recent water billings. Welcome, guys.
Good evening.
How are you?
Okay.
Good.
We've been here before.
Yes, we have.
Okay. So, since the town moved out, and we've been back in, we're talking about the water bill for the last quarter, right? Now, in that quarter, one day, we used 300 gallons of water. Because we were black topping outside, it was 90 degrees, they used 300 gallons of water. For the rest of the 89 days, we used 200 gallons of water. So, in the whole quarter, we used 500 gallons of water. I got a bill here for $297. We gotta, we gotta make it a little better on. That's over 60 cents a gallon.
And this for the first quarter?
No, I'm talking just the last quarter, just, just last quarter.
But your bill is comprised of multiple elements.
I'm sorry?
Your bill is comprised of multiple elements.
I understand that.
It's not just the amount of water that you use.
Well, but it's a water bill. I mean, you're charging us for two units.
It's a water and sewer bill.
Okay, but you're charging us for two units. But we're not using the water of two units. We're using the water less than one unit. We're not using water. But $297 for 500 gallons of water?
It's $297.
I know what you're saying about the sewer and the two-unit charges, there's a basic, a basic payment for each unit. But is this fair?
I'm trying to figure that out. That's what we're here for. So, so first of all, what's, what is the base unit? I mean, one thing is that the water bill isn't the, only the water used. It's like whoever, whoever's tapped into our water system, you know, there's costs to that.
I understand that.
Okay, well, that's one of the costs. And what is the, what is the base per unit?
So, there are five, so there are five elements that the American Legion is billed for. One is flat rate, the flat charge, which is $56.25 per unit, per quarter. So, for that, you're charged $112.56. There is the endpoint technology, and for that, it's $2.67 per quarter. I'm going up this one. The amount of water that you use, $528, you are charged a total of $1, 528 gallons, you are charged a total of $1.61 for that water. In addition, you have two sewer units, and each sewer--
How can we have two sewer units? There's only one pipe going out of the building.
I believe, sorry, it's not how many pipes that go out, it's how many units.
I, I understand that you're saying units, but we're not using water, so why are we getting charged for two units? Because we got two little bathrooms? It's just not right. It's just not right.
I believe that you are classified as a meeting room in the village code. And as a meeting room in the village code, you are charged for two, two water units and two sewer units.
Okay, all right. I, I understand. You know, the ambulance corps does not have a meter on their building. There, there are 24/7s, and they pay $100 a quarter. And they get $300,000 from the town, and they also are not a volunteer organization anymore. They bill you if you get an ambulance call and all. Why are they getting all these gifts? And the veterans aren't?
I am not familiar with the water and sewer tax that is being paid by the approach upon the ambulance corps.
All right, well, so you think the bill that we're getting is fair?
Yes.
I, I have nothing else I could say, then.
Hi, my name's Anthony Sexton. I'm a member of the-- On the bill, it comes to two addresses.
Yes.
It comes to 10 and 14. 14 is the ambulance corps. And we did speak to Anne Bouchard, and she mentioned the fact that we're probably getting charged, a basic charge for the both places.
No.
Your bill is based upon your tax map ID.
Can't hear that one.
Your bill is, your bill address is based on your tax map ID. Your tax map ID identifies the property that, that is owned by the American Legion as being 10 through 14 Cedar Street. Now, I don't know how the Philtown Volunteer Ambulance Corps gets their water. Do they have a water line, Jeff?
My understanding is that it's a well.
Okay.
That you own the property, so you probably know better?
Well--
That, so if it's a well--
Doesn't the law say everybody has to hook up to--
No, they have the pipe coming in. There's a split.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not arguing. We can't be hooked up to the ambulance corps because there, there are 24/7s, and we'd use a lot more than 500 gallons of water.
Well, I'm saying with the ambulance corps, they're not drawing on the village water system. I believe they have a well.
So, then you're telling me we can put a well in?
To put in a well, you must receive approval from the Putnam County of Health. And that well has to be non-cross-contaminated with the village water system. That's the law. It's not just the village law, it's the county law.
And the ambulance corps does get charged for sewer, and they get charged the out-of-village rate for sewer.
So, that's it. We're gonna--
How are you guys using that much water? You guys aren't there. I, I mean-- There's nobody there. I just don't understand how they're using that much water.
We're not, we're not. We only use 500 gallons in three months. And one, one day was 300 gallons.
What, so what's, what's the base, can we add, what's the base cost for what they're getting? For the sewer is what?
$83, no, $88.30.
$88.30 per unit, and they have two, and they're charged for two units.
Because they have two units.
Right, okay, so that comes out to $176?
$60.
Right. Okay, so that's 176 of the, of the money we're talking. Now, what's the base water rate?
$56.25.
For each unit?
For each unit.
And so that comes to the $112.50?
Yep.
Okay, so that's $112.50.
And the technology--
This is just to keep, this is just a hookup, but everybody pays?
It's, it's the hookup.
Right.
Everybody pays.
The use.
They're paying double because they are assessed--
Because they have two.
Yeah. But I pay this, so I pay half of that.
No, I understand that. So, $289 is, is for the base, the flat rate charge? Okay. That's out of $500? Out of what they're saying for the--
Out of $297, which was the bill.
$293.30.
That's what the bill was?
Yes.
So, so you understand that what you're charging actually for the water is like--
Here's their water charge. They got charged $1.61.
A dollar sixty-one cents for the water.
For five--
I, I understand that, but--
So, we're not charging you for the water, it's just--
Well, and, you know, I don't know how you look at it, but you're charging us for water because--
Well, we're charging everyone the base so that we can run the operation like the sewer plan, and the water, the water and sewer--
I understand that.
And the hires and everything that's involved in keeping our--
But my charging is for two units, when we're not even using enough water for one unit, that's all I'm debating here. It's just--
Are you two?
You know, 200 and some dollars just don't calculate right.
So, Tom, as I understand it, you were doing renovations in, in the building to attract more users to your building. Is that correct?
But we don't even have chairs and tables. We can't rent the place out. We don't have no permits.
But it is your intention to--
When that time comes, I'll be more than welcome.
Okay, and so when that time comes, your water use will go up.
Why don't you just, you know, give us a little time, let me digest this a little bit? Don't just go away saying it's not the end of it. Let me, let me just think about this. If it's in the code that it's two units, and that's what you're paying for, I mean, that's, you might not think that's fair, but I, you know, it's in our code, we're just following the code. The cost for, you know, to just keep the infrastructure going is your base pay, so it's not your water. Everybody, I pay that, and we pay that, everyone here pays that.
So, if I take a bathroom out, I could save $150 a quarter.
Uh--
The two units-- Yes, you could, but then you wouldn't qualify as a meeting room any longer. Then you would not qualify as a meeting place any longer. We would not permit group gatherings because you're not a meeting place.
Well, you haven't been a meeting place in 30 years.
Well, you did host the town offices there, and you did, for a time, you had the seniors there for lunch.
Twenty-five years.
Exactly.
And you guys didn't charge the county?
No, no, we, you're the property owner. If, if you wanted to, you could have set up a lease with the county to charge them for that. We do have people who own the property for whom their water and sewer bills get sent to someone other than the property owner. That's part of the lease arrangement.
I gotta go.
Okay.
Thank you.
I, I, I just need a little more time on this, so, I mean, so unless you want to just walk out and not listen, then we'll just call it.
No, no. Well, I'm here, that's why I'm here, to try to resolve this a little bit.
Right. I would like to just take a little more time, not in this meeting, to, to look at this and consider, you know, your guys' renovation and not doing stuff or whatever, and maybe for this year, I don't know. But just give me a little more time on it.
Okay.
I should point out that many of the churches in the, in the village pay a similar charge. It's, it's not unique to the American Legion. The charges, the way they're set up, are not unique to that particular building.
I understand that. And probably, well, I'm not going to get into every church because I'm not sure exactly what they do, or how much they use their facility, or anything like that, so.
But it's, it's not a question, I'm sorry, the number of units, right? It's not how many people you have in there. It's--
I understand, I understand exactly what you're saying. I just, I just think that, I think other churches would use their facilities and rent them out more than, than what the American Legion has. And whether or not that is here or there, that is another question.
So, so let me ask a question. When did the town leave the building? It's like, when did Elvis leave the building?
When did what?
When did the town leave the American Legion building?
The middle of April.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask--
Absolutely.
Since I'm, this is the first time I'm seeing this, so I'm just trying to digest this, but I guess my question is kind of a blunt question, but what is it that you would want?
I, I'd be happy with just charging us one unit and for the water, you know? Because, like I said, it just, we don't use, we're not using it. And when, and if we get down the road and we do start renting it out, I have no problem going back to two units. You know, but right now, it's, we have no income. We haven't even been able to sell poppies, other than putting cans in stores and stuff. So, we're trying to get down that road to where we can rent it out.
Okay, give me a bit more time.
Okay, thank you.
Let me consider. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good night.
Okay, we have approval of insurance renewal. My mix here ahead of, here we go. Is anyone on, on this topic?
Sure. Do you want to take it?
Nope.
There were a number of notes about where it went up. There were no notes about where it went down.
I think it did go down, Jeff. Tell me wherever it collected.
Yeah, the equipment flotter went down by about $210. The public official liability went down by over $1,000. The law enforcement liability stayed the same. So, those two went down by $1,200 together.
And the package which is the general liability specifically is what brought this whole thing up. The package went up about $9100. We met with Kieran Tweeps, and Jeff and I met with Kieran last week.
Yeah.
Last week. And he brought this into us. And the specific reason why this has gone up is because we have got a lot of liability claims at this point. A lot of trip and falls, a lot of them have turned into bigger money than we would have liked to see. And so, that in itself brings us up. Kieran said that he went back and forth with Navarre a number of times to get this down to where he knew we had budgeted, or were a little below our budget. The good part about this is, as you know from previous years, those, any liability claims stay on our--
Our record.
For five years. So, the, the two big liability claims that we looked at, two of them, which are the $250,000 or $100 and something thousand, both of them are their fifth year, so they will drop off at the end of this year. If we don't have any big liability claims coming in this year, we should see, I can't say a reduction, but we should see this kind of an addition.
There was one last January trip and fall on the sidewalk, that the claim is for a large amount of money, and that's what's driving the increase.
And when those, those suits are finalized, or, or, once they're settled, do we, do they contact us and let us know that? I know some of them we have, but--
Typically, yeah, they are nine-meral, then, yeah.
And do we know where those ones are at? I know there's a couple of them that are out there. Are they just in--
There's, the largest one is still in progress. There was another one that was recently settled. And then also, there was the one on Rock Street is included in this too, but--
Right.
Because that was originally for monetary damages.
Because it was what?
Originally, it was monetary damages that he was seeking.
Yeah, but monetary damages, oh, right, they pay through that, right, yeah, for the insurance. Okay.
And so that, all right. Since that's been settled, so adjusted. So, you need a motion?
Yes, we do.
I would like to make a motion to approve the insurance renewal for the period August 1, 2021 to July 31, 2022, in the amount of $1,2,062.279.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Let me just quickly do the approval of the minutes. Make a motion to approve minutes from 7:13:21?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of 7:20:21?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And finally, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of 7:26:21?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Just, just, is there a way we don't have to include all of this for the minutes? Do we need that? I mean, you guys go over this, and we're pretty much settled on it.
Well--
Is it necessary? It's a lot of work, paper.
It's a lot of paper, yeah.
It is a lot of paper. This happens because of the number of resolutions. Typically, Marie's the only one that gives me feedback on the minutes. So, yes, until more people start reading and get feedback. We're approving them, so they should be included in the package in their entirety.
This is also the monthly--
Yes, the monthly meeting.
The 7:13 has all the materials.
Yeah.
And the big presentation from HDRB.
But even if everybody read and we had edits, they would still should be included.
Do you want to put them on both, two sides? Or is that a problem?
Yours is the only one that's not two-sided.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, you can two-side mine. Thanks. I thought, I mean, I've seen a bunch of people, I mean, I thought, like, I've seen people commenting on the thing, so I thought they were, anyway. Anyway, just, just asking.
Yep.
Okay, thanks. Next, the parking committee presentation. Welcome, Jack.
Thank you. He just had a bath, but I wouldn't let him on the public front. He did. I'm it for tonight. I'm either afraid or glad to say, the other volunteer members of the committee are on vacation. So, what I'd like to do, if I can, is to take you through this in fair detail, so that it's in the public record. And these represent the final recommendations of the parking committee, as you all know better than anyone. It then becomes the responsibility of the trustees to decide what to do with these recommendations, and to move forward, or to not, or to amend. I did want to say a few words in thanking Marie and Dave for providing the necessary limits on the world of the possible for the committee, because it provided us with an intelligent framework within which we could work. And also, to thank the other volunteer members who aren't here. Rebecca Ramirez, who is a resident in the, in the permit parking area, is a businesswoman on Main Street, and a mother, among other things, is a Cora Fellow, and has had in her career experience in the issues of transportation. Secondly, Dan Valentine, who is a lifelong resident, his family has been here several generations, is a police officer there, and has both an intimate knowledge of the sensibilities of the village, as well as the enforcement issues. And Evan Hudson, who is a resident of the village and is a highly regarded real estate lawyer. And so, I would certainly have been proud to serve with that group on any committee, I mean, on any subject. And I think they were particularly well-suited on this subject. And having served on many committees in my lifetime, I'd say this was a very enjoyable experience. The, there was a sense of comradeship and common purpose. Everyone did a great deal of work, and I, I think personally produced an extremely credible and sensible basis for moving forward on this issue, which has evaded solution for many years. So, having said that, if I can ask you to turn to the second page here, you'll see a graphic for which we need to thank Jen Suarich, who offered to do this, and I took her up on it. And this is to give you and the public an idea of the, the goals, and what we hope to be the positive results of rationalizing parking. You know, we feel that the recommendations you're going to hear do just that, and will produce these goals to the benefit of quality of life of the whole village. And within that calculus, there will be people, individuals, who are less pleased with what they see to be as the inconvenience on them personally weighed against the benefit to the quality of life of the community and of the whole. But being where you are, and having sat where you are, I think you understand that there is always that balance at work. At the bottom of this graphic, you'll see a recommendation from us that whatever you all pass, be monitored for a year, so that we can see the impact of these, of these steps, as to whether they are working up to the level that we have hoped. And if not, to go through a period of taking input from the public again, and modifying if, if you so need to. So, on to the next page. These are the four recommendations of the committee, which I will go through individually.
I have to skip the page here. I have this one next. Parties of interest?
The parties of interest. This is a breakdown, and it is not complete, of the parties of interest that the committee either predicted or learned were going to be interested and affected by whatever these regulations were. So, you see, it's, it's a complicated list of interests and expectations, and, and, and sensibilities, again, that have to, on the larger sense, be satisfied, that they are fitting into a reasonable plan that is fair, you know, that is equitable, and that will work to a sufficient extent to make their support warranted. But it is a group of very different points of view, based upon personal experience, based upon their role in the village, and based upon their general attitudes about regulations. Okay. I'm sure that there are other, I know there are others we left out, but these are the major ones we reveal. On to the recommendations. One is to implement the residential parking permit area that the trustees approved in 2015, but did not implement. And that was an important precondition of the work that we were doing. And during the course of our analysis of it, certain things became evident that may not have been evident at the time that this was passed, but nevertheless, this, and, and this, this is the framework, at least, of the residential permit parking piece of this within which the committee worked. Secondly, we are recommending a limited app-based pay parking system in locations in the village, which I will go over with you all in detail. And also, the retention of free areas of parking, meant to serve a variety of constituencies, including the unbanked and those not carrying smartphones, because the app-based parking meter system obviously works on both of those. One needs a credit card, and one needs a smartphone. Number three was to provide dedicated parking spaces in the village for Main Street business owners and their workforce. It has been a constant source of frustration for some, that very often, many potential parking, many parking spaces are taken up either by Main Street owners, shop owners, the merchants, or their workforce. And we feel that that is, that is a habit that ought to be curbed, if possible, because it is unproductive in terms of the overall economic and economic viability of the village. And, and so, in addition to making this recommendation, we have also asked the Chamber of Commerce to make it policy for their members, that they encourage their workers not to park on Main Street, not to park on the adjacent general parking areas, but to use the areas that are set, that are being set aside for them. Dave very generously walked the, the distance from one of them, from the major location of these, and it's a four-minute walk from the-- of these, and it's a four-minute walk from the, from the areas that we're setting aside to Main Street. So we don't see this as a terrible burden on people, and it will make an enormous difference in terms of the available parking space and the easy flow of turnover of parking spaces. It will also provide workers with guaranteed reserved parking, which they can use for eight hours a day. And so we feel that it just, that will require not only the implementation of special parking areas, but a change in attitude and practice. And the fourth recommendation is because what we're presenting here does represent a significant change and a not necessarily immediately simply understood one, we're recommending that there be a media campaign to inform the public. And we have secured the volunteer services of a resident public relations person who is willing to help the village, you know, create, structure, and implement this information campaign. It will not, this whole system will not work unless people know about it in advance. Also, the Chamber of Commerce has a page about what to expect in cold spring for people before they arrive here, and we are asking them to include this as well. Basically, it's going to be a matter of driving traffic to a map that lays out all of these areas. Okay? All right. So, by the way, if you have questions, just, you know, jump in, interrupt me. Recommendation number one, which has to do with the implementation of the 2015 public resident parking permit area. I think you're all familiar by this time that this is the second time we've presented to you, and this has been thoroughly gone over in the two public meetings that the committee held, which were well-attended and, I thought, very useful. The public, the resident parking permit area includes Railroad Street, Stone Street, Cross, Garden Church, High, Furnace Rock, Kemble, from Main to Rock Street, Northern and Halldale. And there is following this, a map that provides that out. With, the regulations will be, will be enforced from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, 365 days a year. Within that area, there are 161 spaces that are set aside for residents, which would be permit-only parking. Within that area, we are setting aside 85 spaces for general parking, which would be no fee and no residency requirement, and could be used, we hope, by Main Street residents as well as visitors, either near or far. This represents a 70% dedication of resident parking spaces and a 30% dedication of general parking spaces. The minimum by state law is 80/20, and so we have increased the spaces for Main Street residents and visitors by 10% over the minimum. In terms of resident permit eligibility and the calculus that we are recommending for the allocation of permits within, on these 11 streets, we are recommending that addresses with off-street parking be issued one permit for street parking, addresses with no off-street parking, two permits for street parking. We are recommending that legal rental units on a property be, with a separate water meter, be granted one permit. Proof of eligibility will be required, and the permits will be non-transferable. We are recommending a $10 annual fee for parking permits. Guest permits will be available. Administration of the issuance of the permits will be carried out through the village hall. These permits will be hanging permits so that they will be easily visible, and the enforcement will be carried out by the village police. Now, I'd like to go back and point out a few things. The numbers of permits, a hundred of, that we, under our formula of one permit and two permit, represents 100% absorption of the 161 resident parking spaces without including the apartments. And so the committee was faced with a dilemma, and basically two philosophical approaches to dealing with that. One was to treat apartment dwellers as a separate class within the parking permit area, based on the fact that they don't pay direct property tax. And the second was to accept the principle that we would be recommending the issuance of more permits than the spaces available on paper. And there are difficulties with both of those solutions. We ultimately opted for the second, which was to issue more permits than there are spaces, and we did so for several reasons. For one thing, the permits that we are contemplating here are only permits that people are eligible for. We can't predict how many people will actually get the permits. And so we don't know in practice what the absorption rate is going to be, and we felt, again, that seeing this over the course of a year was a better way to go than creating what would have been a very controversial approach to this in separating out renters from property owners. There was difference of opinion on the part of the committee, but that's where the committee came down, and I, and like everything else in this document, all of their recommendations are unanimous. And so that is the direction in which we are recommending that the village go and see how, over time, the, the actual demand of the permits matches with the availability, the supply of the spaces. Now, it, yeah? Go ahead, finish your thought. Okay. I was gonna say, it's going to, in all likelihood, become most evident whether we have a problem or not with this on those very busy weekends and national holidays, where there's going to be an influx of visitors taking up the third, in part, the 30% of the general parking as well as the fact of finding out how many people are actually going to apply for, for their, okay?
No, it says permits are non-transferable.
Yeah.
So if I have company and I want to put my car in my driveway, I can put a permit on somebody else's car or something, and stuck to my license.
Well, what we, what the committee would prefer, and that seems to have escaped my, my text writing here, we would prefer that, there will be, what I'm saying is, there will be visitor's permits available to village hall as well as daily permits for people on service calls. So either medical personnel coming in or construction personnel coming in. And so we would like, we would prefer, in order, for two reasons. One is to get a grasp on what the real usage is, which we cannot do if people are continually shifting off their permits. And number two, the, you know, the good side of giving someone a permit is that you have visitors. The bad side is that you end up with a, you know, a trading situation. Thank you. Yeah? We would like, no, this is.
I have a few questions too on this piece.
Yeah.
So, family is coming in, person has to go down, come here and get, is it a daily permit or a, if they're saying for...
No, we anticipate, you know, we anticipate that would be for the length of the stay.
Okay. And the fee for a guest permit is, is there a fee for a guest permit?
We didn't actually discuss that.
Okay.
Okay.
Next question on the, I'm just trying to understand the rental situation.
Sure.
So I would think there's a fair amount of buildings where it's, you know, an old, it's an old house and they've broken it into rentals, but the, there's one sewer, oh, sorry, sewer, that's a different conversation, water meter that pays for, and say the owner pays for that, but there's four units in the, in the house. How does that?
As far as our recommendations are concerned, because we felt we had to place some sort of arbitrary limit on the numbers of permits that were out there, we are, eligibility would require that you have a separate water meter.
Okay, so if you're...
Sorry, sorry. It's a separate water, um, a unit.
Unit, yeah.
Not, not a separate water meter.
Unit.
Okay. So if I live in a building and I'm renting, but I don't pay for the water, I mean, it's part of my, whatever, I don't, I will not be eligible for a permit because...
It depends if I'm what your landlord has told the village in his, in that structure. So if the landlord has claimed two water units in the structure, that structure would be available, would be eligible for two permits. If the landlord is running one water unit, no, only one permit. A good feeling. On these particular streets, you're not going to find a four, a four unit. I don't think.
Yes, you can.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They have to be legal units.
Right.
And this, again, going back to 2015, I'm not sure that the subtleties of the numbers that are, were, I mean, this is an R1 district, but it is not necessarily at this point functioning really as an R1 district. Any?
Those, I think, were my questions on this. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Moving on to, and this map, following, provides the number of permit parking spaces on each of the 11 affected streets. And in orange and in green are the general parking spaces, all of which the committee is recommending will be free spaces, free parking. So, moving on to recommendation two, one of the goals that the committee was looking at as part of this agenda of public good through this parking, these parking modifications, was to provide the village with direct income associated with tourism. As you all know, the, the village, Putnam County is one of the six or seven counties in the state of New York that does not return sales tax to the sources. We had, up until last year, I believe, received $7,500 a year from Putnam to take care of garbage and other tourism-related burdens on the village, and that has stopped. And so although the village produces any, an outside portion, percentage of the sales tax that goes to the county, it does not directly benefit from, from that fact. And so in the case of metered parking, the revenue goes directly to the village, is at the village's total discretion as to how it's paid. And there are other advantages to metering, which I can go into if you would prefer. The committee interviewed three companies that offer these services in depth and received information from several others that offer these services. After those interviews, when it seemed that the committee was leaning toward recommending Park Mobile, we divided up the villi, six villages, I believe, maybe seven, in the immediate area that use Park Mobile and have experience with it, and in all of those cases received nothing but positive reviews. In fact, we received no negative reviews in terms of their accessibility, their reliability, their probity, their financial probity, and the sort of simplicity of handling of the, of the financial data. The way it works is that there is no charge to the village in advance of setting up the system, and with Park Mobile, there's no charge for the signage for the system, which is a considerable advantage. Park Mobile takes a small fee, 35 cents, 35 cents directly from each transaction, and the village pays, or the credit card being used will receive the standard 4-point-something percentage for the transaction as well. Beyond that, the village benefits from the entire parking fee. So that is one tremendous advantage, is that there's no capital investment involved in this and very little risk on the part of the village. And the third is that the parameters of the parking, in the sense of the hours that it will operate, the days of the week it will operate, and the hourly costs are completely flexible. So that if we find that the $2.50 an hour that we are recommending for Main Street with a three-hour limit is not working for some reason, or is not producing enough, or is not meeting what are current standards, Park Mobile can change that within a few days without any, as I say, any interruption in the service. And so the village, going forward, has total flexibility in how it manages and manipulates all of those factors. But we may find that, as I say, that if the, if we're at 100% capacity in the village lot, that it may indicate that we should increase the parking or increase it during certain hours of the day. But it is a now widely recognized and positive way to deal with the issue of pay parking, not involving either any sort of street furniture or maintenance or, or upfront capital costs of any kind. So what we are recommending to start... So what we are recommending to start out with is that Main Street from, um, the traffic light down to Depot Square be, have active metering on, on the weekends and holidays only from ten AM to five PM at two fifty an hour with a three-hour limit. After three hours, you must move your automobile. You can move it to another metered spot perhaps, but you must move your automobile. And so what we are trying to assay is whether or not we can increase the turnover and the orderly turnover of spots on Main Street for a variety of reasons. One, we hope, would be the reduction of traffic congestion and all of the environmental negatives that it produces. The second area that we're recommending is the municipal lot, which as you know, is already a metered, spot location, but under a different system. And we would, under our recommendations, it would be incorporated into the new metering system. And, um, there, there would be a different set of governing rules. Weekends and holidays, nine AM to five PM, uh, two fifty for, an hour for three hours. Anything more than three hours, it would bump up to three dollars an hour. On the weekends and holidays, overnight, it would be a dollar twenty-five an hour, again, unlimited. And on weekdays, um, twenty-four hours a day, it would be a dollar twenty-five, also unlimited. We're recommending that the exterior of Mayor's Park, where there's the head-in parking at the gates, be metered. And again, on weekends and holidays, nine AM to five, to two fifty for three hours, and then it bumps up for, uh, four hours or more to three, three dollars an hour. Overnight, a dollar twenty-five an hour, and weekdays, a dollar twenty-five an hour. Now, if you turn back to the constituency page, you'll see that Cold Spring wrestles with various kinds of visitors. Some people are coming here by car to hike, and so for them, you're looking at longer-term parking. Some people are coming to shop, um, which is a different kind of parking demand. And so what we've tried to do in this mix, again, is to anticipate providing parking and providing revenue streams from parking geared toward different uses. It is possible that someone coming from, um, coming to hike may be wise enough to park in one of the free spaces in the residential parking area where there is no limit to how long they can stay and may occupy that space. There is no way that we can really determine that. But what we are trying to do is provide, is to seg- segment parking into short and longer term and to provide different parking opportunities for different uses and maximize the revenue that the village will receive. Again, that's a tall order to predict in terms of its actual success. And so again, we are looking to see how it will work over the course of a year. We are recommending that you all look to see how it is working over the course of the year and what amends might be warranted.
Gentlemen, on the pricing, um.
Yep.
The municipal lot and also Mayor's Lot.
Yes.
I'm not reading this right. It says, I'm looking at two fifty for, for three hours, but it's not that, it's two fifty per hour, right? For three hours?
Yes, per hour for three hours.
In both cases? And three dollars for each additional hour?
And three dollars for, for each additional hour.
Okay, 'cause I thought it was two fifty for.
No, no, I'm sorry, that's.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, let me, um, during the course of, again, the public meetings particularly, there was strong opposition or concern from Main Street residents who live above. That they were being discriminated against and that there was preferential treatment for the residents in the resident parking district. And the explanation that the purposes of the residential parking district are different, are meant to meet problems and the needs of areas that are characteristically different than a main business corridor. And generally, main business corridors are not included in residential parking permit areas because they are not residential parking, they are not residential areas primarily. That explanation was academically sound, but it did not satisfy the desires. And so what the committee recommended at the, at the begi-, sorry, at the beginning of the process in the first map, if you'll look, the free parking spaces within the parking dis-, in the residential permit area were metered spaces. And what the committee recommended after the public meetings was to drop those metered spaces and make them general free spaces. And so what we are hoping, and I think from the most vocal of the residents on the industry who brought this matter to our attention, our understanding is that if they learn to work within this system, that if on a Friday night, knowing that the next weekend, the weekend is going to be difficult and they don't want to pay the meter on, on Main Street and shouldn't, because that's not the time or the place for them to park there. On a Friday night, they can find themselves one of the free spots in the resident parking permit area and park their cars there. And as all of these spaces are adjacent to Main Street, that offers them a fair and reasonable opportunity to, to move their cars. And we are hoping that they will take advantage of that.
Can I ask on that? So, back to my, my example, um, so there's an apartment, uh, an old house with four apartments in it, um, on Main Street. On a weekend, let's say it's a holiday weekend, so it's, the parking is atrocious. They go to the grocery store, come back, now they're circling around to find a parking spot near their home. So either, and they would have to pay the meter in order to park in front of their house. Let's say if there was a spot available in front of their house, they would have to pay the metered parking for the hours there.
On, on a weekend from, um, nine AM to five PM, or ten AM.
Ten AM.
Ten AM to five PM, yes. So, in terms of changing behavior, it's the same as in the city as opposite side of the street.
Sure, sure.
And so if I lived on Main Street, a resident on Main Street, if I were going to shop, um, I might shop, um, leave to shop at four o'clock and after five o'clock, it's, there's no metering on Main Street, okay? In terms of moving my car, if I'm on Main Street, and don't forget, Main Street is limited to four-hour parking at this point. It's not enforced, except on weekends. But during the, the normal time, it's not enforced. And so if I were to, you know, uh, if I lived on Main Street and it was going to be a busy weekend, I would, at five o'clock on Friday night, move my car off Main Street to one of the parking spots. It will require buy-in from people and the legitimate use of the system for your own benefit. But it is a relatively, I think, and again, I don't have a crystal ball, but it is a relatively modest number of weekends at this point over the course of a year where this is going to be a serious problem.
Okay. Then my next question is, um, for the, the permit parking spots. So, I live on one of these streets, parking clearly last year, but still this year is, it's a thing.
Yep.
On the weekends, for sure.
Yep.
I leave to go to the grocery store, I come back, now there's, there's cars there, um, and it's somebody coming in from, that doesn't have a permit, they're going to get a ticket. But they could, in theory, sit there all day.
Well, they could.
All night.
They could, but that's an enforcement issue, and that's an enforcement issue that the village needs to take seriously, including towing. You know, I, I know several people in the parking district who have come home to find people parking across their parking, uh, their driveway.
Yes.
Do you know?
Do I? Very familiar with that scenario.
Okay. So, a lot of people are too nice to call the towing company. But the fact remains, uh, none of this really works unless there's a commitment to stronger enforcement.
So would it be the responsibility, let's say if someone was parked in front of my house without a permit, it would be my responsibility, let's say they've already gotten the ticket, but now it's my responsibility to call the towing company, or how does that?
That needs to be worked out in terms of the village and enforcement.
The village does not currently have towing.
What?
The village currently does not have towing.
Yes, I know it doesn't currently.
Yeah, towing involves a secure warrant. Yeah, it involves having someone there so that someone can reclaim their car.
So, it becomes your responsibility.
So it's my responsibility to call a towing company and give them to tow?
I don't know that they would tow.
I believe the village would have to have some kind of an agreement with the towing company or more. I know last year when they were towing because of the crazy car splopped during COVID, they were, you know, the towing companies were companies that the state, the sheriff's department used as well as us. And I believe in a couple of instances, the police would say to the homeowners, here's the towing company, call. And they would come, but it was an agreement that they were working this district.
I didn't think we had an agreement with the towing.
I think it was through the sheriff, and I think it was just for those odd days that, um, that, you know, there were a couple of cars, a couple of cars that we got towed, our police got towed.
Well, that is something that I think the trustees.
Yeah, I mean, I think the enforcement piece of this is, is the tricky piece, right? Because without it, it's kind of like.
There needs to be a commitment for enforcement.
Right.
There is no reason also why the price of the ticket can't make it more painful, do you know? And that news does get out.
I think we're limited there by what New York State permits.
What does New York State permit?
Fifty dollars.
Yeah, there, there is a, some of our, some of our pricing is based on the state pricing, and so.
And that we did not look at, but I would sure explore the possibility of.
Sorry, I'm just, I'm just, just trying to like play this, this scenario out. So they get, let's say enforcement comes, they give them a ticket, but now this person has, has been there five days or whatever, two days, whatever it is. They, will they just continue to generate tickets for every, how does it work? For every hour past whatever, or how does it?
No, it's, in the residential parking permit area, uh, I believe, I believe they would be limited to one per day. But we'd have to check with, uh, Tom on that.
I know that the, um, extended parking is a problem in the district as it is on, has been on lower Main Street as a commuting, you know, situation. Some of that is the result of Main Street merchants parking for extended periods of time in the residential parking area. And there will need to be a wake-up call issued by the village to all of the affected parties that this is a serious matter, that, you know, and that if, at least in my view, if we don't begin to gain some concrete control over it, considering what the trends appear to be in terms of visits to Cold Spring, mass tourism projects that are contemplated, it will simply be chaotic chronically the way it was last, last year. So, it is a substantial change in behavior. It is going to be less profound for newer residents here, which there are a considerable number now than for people who have been born and raised here. But it is either begin to make that change and ask people to buy into it or to sort of lose the moment in setting the ground rules. And let me also say, what we're proposing here clearly is not the last word on the refinement of what will work, but it is the result of our filtering a huge amount of information and as many prospective problems as we could into a rational system.
Sorry, and I do actually have another question. Um, why wasn't Marion included? Why was it Marion?
Marion Avenue?
Yeah.
It was up until, I mean, up to, um, oh, no, that's Furnace. I can't tell you, you know, the, um, the selection of the streets for the parking district was made by the committee in two thousand fifteen by the trustees in two thousand fifteen. I don't know what was behind the choices.
Was it considered to, to add it in this iteration of your?
It was not because the process of changing it requires going back to Albany.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
So we were.
Working with the plan that you guys understood.
Okay. All right. Like he's looking at potential voters, potential candidates. Recommendation three. We did, we were concerned, of course, about the provision of free parking and, um, simple parking. And so, um, these are the areas that we are recommending be useful to residents, visitors, but particularly that group of visitors that perhaps don't have a smartphone, perhaps don't have a bank account. And these are the spaces that, um, we are recommending due to Dave's negotiation with Metro North. which has always been free parking on weekends, but which until now, the village has never been able to advertise as free parking. We are now, we have now been given permission to advertise that it's free parking on weekends and holidays. And that's fifty spaces down at the, at the Metro North parking lot, which is a tremendous help because if, in terms of wayfinding and in terms generally of sending the message of segmented parking, it's big help. And then the areas that we are recommending for the business owners and their employees are the Boulevard, as long as it's not needed for winter parking, and the area from the, from Campbell and the Boulevard toward the Foundry Preserve, along the marathon site. And those areas may have to be modified. There is room so that they constitute off-street parking, which is what the village can control in terms of its dedication of use, but they may have to be further academized or delineated in some fashion. We are recommending that shop owners, a fee of ten dollars per month for this dedicated parking. And because we feel that there really is a direct quid pro quo between increasing the number of available spaces and the increase in turnover of available spaces on Main Street to potential shoppers, there is a direct, if not, there is a direct qualifiable, if not quantifiable, benefit to the shop owners, yes?
It's ten per month per spot that they want, or, okay?
And again, when we looked into this, at the number of employees on Main Street, on a busy day in the middle of the tourist season, we came up with a hundred employees. Now, not all of them arrive here by automobile. Some of them are dropped off, some of them are walked, some come by train, some drive. And it's a very fluid number because it, generally, it responds to demand. So the restaurants, which are the biggest employees, employers, their workforce shrinks and grows depending on their needs. So again, it was very difficult to come down to, you know, to look to data for a concrete number. And so we sought a fee also that reflected that at times, the cost of doing business was going to go up, and at times it would shrink down with the demand of their customer base.
So a, a, a business owner, if they have four, let's say they have four employees, pretty constant throughout the year, they would pay for the four employees up? And then what if one leaves? So there's now, I mean, do you pay upfront, or you, do you pay per month?
You pay by the month. And it's a special permit that hangs in the window of the car, and the sign says, you know, special term. Okay, again, not necessarily perfect every day of the month, because an employee might leave and you end up paying for a week that you don't.
Right. Cost of doing business.
Yes. Okay, and number four is the public information campaign. I just listed here, based on the committee's discussions, the most likely partners in working with the village to promote and explain what these parking regulations are. And as I say, there would not be a cost to the village involved in creating this campaign or implementing. Okay, the next slide is just a visualization of some of the issues that we heard repeated during the course of the discussions of our expl, our explorations of possibilities. And I won't go through them with you, but I hope that you'll see that we took them seriously in both our due diligence activities as well in our discussions about what was appropriate based on all of the factors involved. But they are, for me, they are all intelligent issues that were raised by the public during the course of the public meetings and the discussions. They were all extremely useful to the committee in fashioning this, and I think represent the kind of level of responsible input that, that kind of a discussion is meant to provide. There was very little during the whole course of this of unuseful input or reactions or wastes of time in general. And the last of the slides here is just a list of the changes that were made over the course of the study of this, of our meetings. That did respond, we felt, in meaningful ways to those issues that were raised during the public meetings and the concerns. And normally, we have ended these presentations with the next step slide, but that's for you all to fill in. We, you know, we feel that, well, let me, let me, again, speaking personally, I, I think the committee discharged its responsibilities to look at this issue in an objective and in-depth way and provide the trustees with a useful set of guidelines, guidelines for moving forward. And we hope that you will, number one, accept them in the spirit in which they are being delivered to you, which is one of community concern and unity, and to act on them. Again, there is a moment now where the village has an opportunity to take some control over this previously elusive problem before it overwhelms the village. And I, I think it's, behalf of the committee, would like to see some action taken.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay.
Please thank the committee.
Please thank the committee.
We both do. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, well, I'm not going to discuss further tonight. We can all digest this a bit and at another meeting or workshop, we'll sort of discuss how we want to move forward or discuss the recommendations and where we're at. We're also kind of in, still talking to Park Mobile, and a few things aren't really in place yet that are in the Metro North lot. We're still trying to sign a contract, which hopefully will finally happen. We've just been discussing with John on Zoom, so we have to find that out. Park Mobile, I don't know where we're at. They seem to be, I don't know, not, not being as responsive as we would have thought. So we need to make sure what's going on with them too, because they would be key to how we would meter Main Street.
I guess I'd like to have this on the agenda for next week.
I'm not going to be ready next week for this. Does everyone feel ready? I mean, we have a lot on the table. I'm not ready for it.
I'd like to give a little breathing space.
What's that?
I'd like to give a little breathing space.
And I think that we've been, we were like involved in the whole thing, so we understand. I mean, I think we're into it more than, you know? This is just regurgitating everything that I knew tonight for me. For you guys, it's new.
Well, we've been talking to...
The committee has presented to the board before.
I know, now, why didn't they even come tonight?
To present the final recommendations.
I know, I mean, other than talking...
I'm sorry, I think we need a little more, I need, I need a little more time.
Yes, I agree. I don't see the, why we need to do this.
I know that's aggravating to you, and I'm sorry about that. We have about ten different things on my plate that I'm working on, and I'm not ready to move this forward right now, sorry. I'll make a motion to adjourn tonight.
Second in?
All in favor? Thank you all.
What's his dog's name?
Oh, I don't know.
You know his dog's name?
Hmm?
His dog's name? Is he Sinclair?